Welcome. The hour being 5:30 p.m. on Wednesday, November 6th, 2024. The Tuilla City Council and Redevelopment Agency of Tuilla City are meeting in a work meeting. This work meeting is being held at Tuilla City Hall in the council chambers located at 90 North Main Street in Tuilla, Utah. This is also being streamed electronically but on the Tuilla City YouTube channel. We will start with a roll call. Councilwoman Manzio.
President.
Councilwoman Goachis.
Present.
Councilman Hanson.
Present.
Councilman McCall.
Present.
I'm Councilman Brady, and I'm also present. We'll move on to item three, which is the mayor's report.
Thank you, council. First, I would just like to thank council members that were able to attend the downtown trick-or-treat. Thank you for standing there for three hours and handing out candy. We also had help from our Tuilla City royalty, and that was great. I don't know how many children and people were out there on Main Street, but I have never seen so many people to a downtown trick-or-treat. So it was very, very successful. We were able to wrap that up before it got dark, which really helped. And then we had tremendous support from our police department and our fire department. In just this area, we narrowed the road down to one lane each direction. It might have been a little inconvenient for a few people trying to travel that way, but they figured it out. And we were safe and did not have any near misses like we did the previous year. So it made it a lot safer, and I am just very appreciative of the staff that were able to participate in that and were willing to work the extra hours to make that happen. Also, just want to remind you, coming up is our Santa Parade, and that will be on Saturday, the 30th of November. We're making that event a full-day event with our small businesses, especially in the downtown area, because it's small business is what keeps our world going, and we're so appreciative of them. But the Santa Parade will start at 2:00. If you're able to be there, we're going to walk this year and throw candy. And when we get tired, we can ride in the trucks, so we'll have a truck there, too. Also, following the parade, Santa will be at the Ritz Theater, and we'll be handing out maybe some candy or something there, but taking all the wish lists from the children. And there will also be a sing-along, I understand, at the same time. So that ought to be a really awesome event. And then at 5:30, we will meet at Veterans Park, and we'll flip the switch and turn on the Christmas lights for the season. So we're looking forward to that. The last item that I have tonight is, listen really careful, "Droopy Road is Open." You know, it was only closed for a couple of weeks back in May, but this is the deal. The road is paved, the road section is done, it is open, and we are allowing residents to drive on it. But the project is not complete, which means there will be still some construction people there working as weather allows. And they'll be working on the sides of the road, but sometimes they may have to block a section of the road to complete what they need to. But it's open, and that will be very great for our residents. But it is still a road. It is not a speed track where you can go as fast as you can. It's 25 miles an hour, so please be respectful of others and stay under that speed limit. We'd appreciate it. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Winn. We'll move on to item four, which is the council member's report. We'll start with Councilman McCall.
I attended the trick-or-treat thing, and I can't remember. Sorry, Michelle, but I did do the trick-or-treat here with you guys. And just FYI, remember, you got to remind me next year, and I'll make sure I get a Bubba outfit.
Yeah, we'll dress up.
Yeah. He was forested, and I'm like, hey, I could do Bubba pretty good.
Try it next year.
That's all I got, man.
All right. Councilman Hanson.
I don't have anything to report. I've just been gone chasing animals this time of year, so I've been gone a lot this last month or six weeks. But I did meet with the mayor, and we met with a couple developers recently, and so the meetings went good. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilwoman Goachis.
Thank you, Chairman. I was able to attend the library board meeting on the 24th. I see our librarian, Chase Randall, here. Appreciate all the efforts that he does in behalf of our community and to run the library. He presented a library card policy, standards of conduct, strategic plan, technology plan. He may report on that tonight. I also attended and volunteered with the Desert Peak Open House, Desert Peak Temple Open House, and it was exciting to see how many visitors it brought to our community. I also participated in the general election, and I want to congratulate our winners in the county and also state and federal. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Manzio.
Sure. Thank you. Just to follow up on that, we had about 135,000 visitors to that temple open house, so many of them were from our own community but also outside. So it was good to welcome people to our community, and hopefully they ate at our restaurants and got gas in their cars while they were here. The best thing I have to report today is that I got to read stories at library today for storytime, and that is always the best thing you can do. It was really fun, and I appreciate the library and the activities they have there. Other than that, I have attended my normal things, but some RDA. We've been talking a lot about our business park property. We've had some interest in the business park from different developers, and we have a lot to discuss about the roads and the detention basins and the zoning that we have there. And so you'll probably be seeing some more of that in the upcoming, well, today you'll be seeing an amended PID policy, but some other things that will come up, too, as we try to market that property. John Perez is doing a great job of marketing that and keeping us informed of who's interested. But we have some work to do there, too, in order to make it viable, especially with the, hopefully someday, Mid Valley Highway. I have my doubts, but with planning around that and what to do there. And then I just want to remind everybody about the upcoming, there are a lot of upcoming events at the Ritz. The mayor mentioned some for Christmas, but there are some other, there are Rockin' at the Ritz activities coming up, quite a few activities. And some of those are to help buy a new popcorn machine. Others are just to help with maintenance at the Ritz, but some great activities that are either free or very inexpensive, so I would encourage you to take a look and see what's there. And then the other things, I went to the same things that everybody else went to, so thanks for that. That's it.
Thank you. I attended many of the same events that the rest of the council stated. I also had a council on aging. That's through Tuilla County. It's at the senior center. And then the North Tuilla Special Service District had a meeting. I think we're getting really close on the Perry Group petitioning the annex into the North Tuilla Special Service District. And then there's three board members on the district that will be, their term expires at the end of the year. So I think in December, we'll see their names come up. It sounds like the same three will like to be on there again. And then that concludes my report. We will move on to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is a discussion on Desert Rose Business Loft Zoning Map Amendment, requested by Amy Johnson to rezone 4.9 acres located at approximately 105 East, 1,000 North, from RR1 Residential to MUG Mixed Use General, presented by Andrew Agard, the Community Development Director.
Thank you, council. I appreciate this opportunity to present this to you. You are familiar with this property, as it recently came to you for a land use map amendment. The city council did adopt that land use map amendment, and this is the follow-up application to tackle the zoning map and to get the zoning that they need to facilitate this project. Just for a refresher, the property is the 4.9-acre parcel, which is highlighted in red on the aerial photograph. It rests immediately north of 1,000 North and east of Main Street. The land use designation of the property is mixed use, as was amended by the city council a couple of weeks back. The current zoning of the property is RR1 Residential, which is kind of a rural residential zoning designation, which permits one house per acre. The applicant is requesting that the property be rezoned to Mixed Use General. The Mixed Use General really is the only zoning district that qualifies for this location. We do have the Mixed Use Broadway, but that zone is geographically specific to the Broadway area. So really, the only mixed-use zone that would be a candidate for this property is the Mixed Use General. The applicant is proposing this zoning map amendment to facilitate the construction of a mixed-use townhome development, whereby they would construct townhomes that would house both commercial uses and residential. In the ground floor of the unit, there would be a studio or office situation, and then the owner of the business would reside in the upper floors of the townhome. The Mixed Use General Zone does permit a mix of residential and commercial uses. It does permit commercial on the ground floor and then dwelling units on the upper floor, but that's about as far as it goes. And so this is a very unique request. We don't have situations such as this in Tuilla City. It does create a unique opportunity for us to provide, as Roger likes to mention, some missing middle housing, places where people to live and start small businesses. I did want to point out that the access into this site is limited, because, as you know, there will be a median extending from SR 36 to 100 East, which will limit to this property to right-in-and-write-out access. So when you consider the need for high visibility and drive-by traffic for a business to thrive, these businesses, I would anticipate, would be more destination types of commercial activities, which don't thrive so much on drive-by traffic and high visibility. So that's the request that's being asked there, asking for Mixed Use General. I wanted to run this by the city council and get your feedback and move it into the public process. So happy to answer any questions you might have about this. I know that the applicant is here as well, if you'd like to speak with him.
I have a question. Does Mixed Use General have a max amount of housing that can be associated with that?
It does not.
Okay.
Just the upper floor and the lower floor. That's all it says.
Okay.
I have some thoughts.
Yeah, go ahead.
Like I said before when this came up, I think that this piece of property is hard. And so I think this is maybe a good use for the property just because of the traffic, number one, and it's just a weird piece of property. That being said, I still don't love the mixed-use zoning. I think we can find something better that meets the needs of the applicant, but the needs of the city, too. I would be really hesitant to vote yes for a mixed-use zoning. There are just too many unknowns for me.
And your comment reminds me of something I failed to state to the council. The Mixed Use General Zone is our most liberal zone. It allows a wide range of commercial uses. It allows every type of residential use, so apartments, townhomes, single-family duplexes. Once that zoning is in place, this property is entitled to every one of those uses. So just for your information, the Mixed Use General, it's a good zone, but it's pretty liberal.
Mr. Chair, have a question. I have a question and concern regarding parking. You know, just what we see here, there's parking in front of the residence, but is there sufficient parking for customers to be able to come to that business that's within that residence? It looks like a very small area for parking, and there's not a big or a large parking area for general people to park. I envision people having to park on the street, which we know that that street's a busy street approaching an intersection.
Yes, that's a very good observation. The Mixed Use General Zone doesn't address parking for mixed-use situations. So in that case, we would have to refer to the automobile parking ordinance and try to calculate parking based upon the individual use and then the residential use. But the Mixed Use General does not have any language in regards to how to deal with parking for this type of situation. And I agree with you. There needs to be ample parking for the commercial side of the development as well.
My thoughts are a lot of the same thoughts, but also, you know, once before in the last, since I've been on as a councilman, we've changed and created a zone that was something that could do some limits. And I would be more apt to do something like that, so we have some control over what's going to be there rather than using Mixed Use, because it's not, you know, there's no access hardly either to create all the other things that could possibly be there, unless we can talk Cindy into tearing her house down. So that will happen. I probably wouldn't.
I don't think so.
So anyway, what do you think about that option? We did it on an industrial.
Doing their own zoning, like just doing their own zoning?
Yeah.
Well, we did the industrial service zone.
Yeah, I think when the wreckers needed to be on that place of all tech electrics or something, we did something there, I think. And so that just made me think of doing something like that rather than just assigning a zone we already have.
That's absolutely something that we, as staff, could facilitate for the city council. The applicant did submit this application requesting the MUG, so we were obligated, obviously, to process and move it through the public process. But writing a new zoning code, I mean, there are many cities that already have this use. I'm more than happy to plagiarize and put together another code if that's something the city council would like to entertain.
I don't know what the rest of you think about that.
What type of zones are those that you're saying other cities have, though?
Usually, they're overlays. So they have an underlying zone, and they slap an overlay onto it that has specific criteria that governs this type of use. So we could do an overlay situation. We could do an entirely new zoning code. There's many different avenues we could venture down if we wanted to.
When we do that, could we possibly look at the codes? Because I know they've done this in other cities. And if we could maybe get a look at what the zones were in those cities that they did this type of function in.
Absolutely.
And that could probably help us a lot. The other thing that, the problem that I have with it, it's, I don't like that it's only going to be a right-in, right-out to get to this property from 1,000 North. And I know there's property on the east side. It's a strip between this property and the other property that it's, I feel we probably should do something to connect that, whether they have to give up some property along with the property owner on the east side, to put a road all the way down or at least to the turn right there at the trailer.
Is there property between the fire station and, there's two homes there. Are you talking about east of both homes?
It's between, it's to the west of that first home. And it's just a small strip of land. I know you know what I'm talking, it's a small parcel that is not owned by the developer. But, and I guess what I'm saying, I got the name of the, gosh, it's not Pratt, it's the RV. There's a road right there.
Tuilla RV.
Tuilla RV, right there where, but anyway, even if they could just take it to that spot, that would give them another entrance into that property. Because right now, the only entrance they got into the property is off of 1,000 North. And to me, that is kind of bad, really.
Yeah, access is limited.
Yes. And I totally welcome the businesses, that I do. But my other concern is, if you don't have access to it, it's really hard for a business to thrive. It really is. But I'm with you guys, if we can figure out a way to make this happen.
I've seen, does anyone else have questions for Andrew, the applicant's here? She's raising her hand back there, so, okay, please come up.
I just wanted to be able to maybe respond to a couple of those things and give you some other possibilities. So first of all, the road idea is a great idea, and if we could cooperate with that. It didn't seem like it was a public road, but I don't know. We'll have to look into that. But as far as the rezoning, I'm just explaining a couple of the processes that we have done in other cities, is they have used the mixed-use zoning. Instead of writing a full overlay or a full zone change or, you know, a whole other zoning ordinance to this one property, is that they manage, and it's ran mostly by the planners, and Jared doesn't work anymore, but, and originally, that's what he told us to work with. And that would be a development agreement. And inside that development agreement is an overlay over this property, and then we have to follow, the development agreement is passed with the zoning. You can't do both without one or the other, or the site plan and the development agreement, and they are tied together. It's a reported item on title, and then we're held to those standards. So that's what we did in Tuilla. It's also what has also been done in Bluffdale with a similar type of product on here. And I'm happy to, you know, they went through and workshopped a couple other cities, especially Brigham City, because we did the same type of product there from Brigham City. And they did, I mean, they have the same thing. It's a development agreement that the city council had to approve and pass and tie it to this piece of property with it. Keeping your MU zoning, the only other problem I see sometimes is when you have spot, you know, it's in your code, then, you know, how can other people, and you can be very specific to this piece versus needing to be more broader if it's a whole code and zone, then you have to be a little bit more broader. Just to talk about the parking section, obviously, we will do that with the additional parking. That square lot, it doesn't show the connectivity. I apologize, but there is that connectivity to that square lot, and that's like the overflow extra parking in addition to that has a parking. So instead of that being a T-bone hammerhead, it connects into that quarter lot, and there's additional parking into there that maybe, you know, another shop would have, but there's parking inside for it, and it would be together. I think those are the main things that you connected with. Yeah, I don't know about the road part, we'd have to research. According to what we were told when we first started this site and we first had our development meetings, that those weren't access points that we were allowed to do, but maybe we can. So, any other questions for me?
Mr. Chair, have a question. Because you have experience with this, I was just wondering if there are any restrictions to someone owning that building and having a tenant that's owning the business and then renting the upstairs. How does ownership work in a business like this?
Yeah, and that's an excellent thing to think about. And I guess I would ask you, as a city, what are some of your goals that you're trying, what are some goals or hindrances that you do not want to have? So, for example, I have had some cities that are, we don't want rentals, and so they have to put some type of restriction there. However, I guess I'm a firm of property rights, so I don't love to put too many restrictions on individuals if they own their property, whether maybe their business, they live upstairs, and maybe their business that they did do goes out of business, and they want to lease it to somebody else as a possibility. That's just done inside to that individual. And then after, because their business went down, they don't also have to move their house as well. They don't have to lose everything. They just, okay, maybe, and that's because a lot of times entrepreneurs, maybe their first business didn't work, and then they have to lease it for a little bit. And then in six months, eight months, whatever, a year, they got a new idea, and that one does work. And then they're able to have it, and they don't have to relocate their entire family just because that business didn't work. And so, or maybe it's just vacant for them. But you could put, Linden City, when we did a product like this, Linden City did put a rental restriction of a certain number of percentages that you could put, but it also depends upon your guys' housing percentages. And I don't know. Yeah. So those are things that can, those were all laid in the development agreement, again, with Linden City as well.
I have another question, if you don't mind. Do you see a need for an HOA, or do you have a plan for some type of a?
This property absolutely needs an HOA, yes. And I understand that CCNRs are not governed by the government, but it does help manage beautification and everything else about the product. So because there's so many common areas, especially the green space around this, and we haven't completely maxed the space of housing, and there is excess green space, it would be best if those had an HOA.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to help clarify?
No.
No, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Amy Johnson. Thanks.
I just wanted to state to the council that if you were interested in pursuing the development agreement, our department is more than willing to work through that process. We can just keep it going as part of the zoning map amendment, maybe put it on a couple more work sessions in the future with you. But that is absolutely, that is a definite option. It has merit.
Does anyone have any strong opinions about it?
You think that's a better option than changing a zone or adding a zone or?
She made a valid point in that any change to the code is going to be, it's going to apply to every parcel that has the Mixed Use General zoning. With a development agreement, it can be site-specific, so you can tailor this property to what you'd like to see.
So we haven't had a lot of positive experiences with development agreements in the past. Just saying. So is there not an option to just create a zone for that specific parcel? We have done that for, so it just has its own page in the code for that parcel.
Absolutely. And you, as the city council, being the legislative authority, you can determine where that zone is going to go and where it's not going to go. So you could create a new zone, and you want it on this property. You don't have to grant it for any other property. So you control that. That is absolutely an option.
What are you thinking with a different zone, though, just?
It's just like we have the business park zone. It applies only to the business park. Is there a way to just do the Desert Rose Loft Zone for just that parcel? I don't know that it's any different than a development agreement. I don't really care either way.
You can call a zoning district whatever you like. There's no restriction on that either.
In essence, I think it would be the same thing. I just, it's kind of like a swear word around here, say development agreement.
Yeah, it's a swear word. I mean, I think, I agree with all the concerns. Parking is a huge concern, and then the access from 1,000 North is, and that road is just getting busier and busier and busier. It blows my mind sometimes how busy it's getting.
One more comment. Just, I think it's because the staff said this more than anybody, and I recognize it happening. Because once you give them the go-ahead and then they build it, there's really no policing of it. So the comment was that the person that's there goes out of business, and on their business, they're still living in the home, and what's going to stop them from just living in the house on the bottom? Or do we have, how do we react to that, and how do we even know that that's happening?
If it's an established zoning code, we could exercise some code enforcement procedures to verify that. The difficulty, then, is substantiating the issue, and that is occurring. That's one of the benefits of an HOA, is they can self-police the property.
True. I guess that was my question. Who's going to police it? I guess the HOA would.
Yeah. If there's no HOA, it'd come down to, we'd have to respond to complaints or investigate the situation. When you're dealing with living situations, it can be difficult for enforcement.
Yeah, agreed.
I would feel comfortable moving forward with either one, whether it's an agreement or some type of zone that we create just for this property. I think it does have potential. I just think we need to be aware of the constraints with this property as well.
So for the council's information, and at the request of the applicant, I did issue a notice for a public hearing for the next planning commission. So I will go ahead and move forward with that, explaining the fact that they need to do a little bit more than just request the zone, and then I'll work with the applicant to see what the best way to proceed. And then I would like to bring this back to future city council work sessions.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, I think if we just put it on the next work session and if you have any ideas for Andrew or any specific concerns, I think it'd help him to know those. So I think we've shared our concerns, but.
Okay, and I'll coordinate with the applicant, we'll see what we can come up with for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next discussion item, it's a discussion on a Mountain View annexation petition, request by Jason Harris of J R G Development LLC to annex approximately 40 acres located approximately 1,400 East Smelter Road into Toilla City. This is presented by Andrew Agar, the community development director.
Thank you, council. This annexation petition has been submitted to our office. However, he is still working through some of the necessary notices that need to be done prior to any official action on this annexation. But I wanted to put it on the city council's work session just to give you a heads-up that it's coming and give you an opportunity to discuss the proposed annexation with the applicant, who is seated right here behind me and ready to speak with you. The 40 acres is the property highlighted in red, it sits immediately east of the golf course, the Alker Mountain Golf Course and the Golf Course View Estates subdivision. It's a relatively flat piece of property, it does slope towards the Great Salt Lake as all properties in the city do, and it has frontage directly onto Smelter Road. The property is located within Area C of our annexation policy plan and is highlighted in red, the darker red, which does authorize the council the opportunity to consider this annexation without having to go through and amend the annexation policy plan. So it's already there and can be considered. This is the zoning in the area, it is all R17 located to the west, it's my understanding that the county zoning is RR5, which is five-acre lots for single-family homes. And then this is the proposal that the applicant has provided up to this point. It is a single-family subdivision consisting of approximately 78 lots, and I say approximately because there has been no official review on this, so it's just a document that they have provided. But the sizes of the lots range from 17,000 up to 26,000 square feet. And so they are fairly, fairly larger than our typical R17 lots, R17 subdivision lots. The applicant has provided a couple of studies, one of them was a drainage study from Ensign Engineering as well as a traffic study. There will be a need for some additional studies such as fiscal impact, public safety impact, parks, water sewer model will still need to be done and so forth. But that's the annexation request. I know that the applicant would like to speak with you and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer what I can for you.
Any questions or comments for Andrew?
Okay.
Okay, we can have the applicant come up, just state your name to the mic for the recorded record.
My name is Jason Harris, J R G Development. Just here to answer any questions that you guys have or, I did prepare just a kind of a brief summary, a subdivision project summary that I'd be happy to share with you if you'd like.
Sure.
So it's our intent to develop the property that we've recently acquired and currently in the county and looking at the option of annexation into Toilla City and some benefit and value that it would bring to the subdivision and community members and the city and community as a whole. And would just like to get some feedback from you guys on your initial thoughts and I know a couple, a couple members were at the pre-development meeting that we had with the Toilla City staff prior to acquiring the property to get some understanding on potential use of it, but any questions that you guys have?
So I just have some comments. The way this is presented right now, I 100% would be a hard no. It's just another large residential area, there's no open space, trails, parks, nothing that's truly benefiting the city as a whole. It would be a beautiful community, I'm sure, in that one area, but to annex something in, maybe you're familiar with the property that was near this that was annexed in, but we did require those to be move-up houses is the way we really pushed for that, minimum size houses. With this particular area, I would like to see larger lots and less homes there to try to really, I think when you look up into Toilla and you see the base of the mountain, not just put houses everywhere, there would have to be some kind of trail component that hopefully would connect to other trails or even just in this community if you had a trail, I think that the community could use, it would be a good use. And then water is always the hot topic in the city. So if you have water rights, then you're, you have an advantage right now, but if you don't, then I think it's very unlikely that it would happen. So those are kind of my first feelings, but.
To answer a couple of questions, in our initial valuation of the use of the property and, you know, with the comment about trails and that is a desirable product for the community, Jake Clegg from Ensign, he did have one suggestion or thought was from the trail that's on the corner of Druby and Smelter Road that goes down to England Acres, looking to, if there is enough area in the right-of-way on the north side of Smelter Road to continue that trail east towards this community and any future potential communities that may exist in that area. But also, the thought was, as I look at the GIS maps along the golf course, there appears to be an easement that goes south down the boundary of the golf course, and I'm not sure where that, where that goes, if there was a potential or ability to have a trail that began at Smelter Road and maybe was an extension of the trail that goes from the corner of Druby and Smelter that gained access to Middle Canyon and through the city, you know, maybe with some arrangements with the city nearer along the golf course and if there was a path that could get that trail up to Vine Street, which would then, you know, give access to the canyon. That's just some things that, you know, this is just a very general concept plat to just get in front of you all and get some feedback and ideas and thoughts. You know, we're open to, you know, a number of potential outcomes that could benefit the community and be desirable product for you all.
Any other questions, comments?
I was at the pre-development meeting when they brought this, I said similar, I think I had similar comments to what you just said, if I remember right. And they did talk about a gated community as well and I see some benefits to that, but I also had some issues with that because then it's gated, so none of that is accessible to any other residents, so.
Yeah, so the gated community is something that we would like to explore and like to explore, you know, the feedback from city council, it's not something I have a personal experience with in the past, but I feel like that it could be something that could attract some more affluent homeowners or business owners in the community, some larger lot sizes and larger homes that could also bolster the, you know, the tax revenues for the city as well. But if we were to look at the trail, we would, and we were to do a gated community, we would obviously, you know, place the trail on our west boundary and have that be accessible to, you know, all of the community and citizens.
So it sounds like you would be willing to have less houses, not the 78, but depending on if it's a gated community versus not.
Right. We're, you know, we want to maximize the, you know, the use of the area, you know, for the financial impacts of the development costs and the annexation and all the components associated with that. So, you know, maximizing the number of lots in there is beneficial to make the project pencil and work, but, you know, so limiting it to, you know, we've discussed the larger lot sizes, you know, we wanted to be above kind of the typical standard, you know, community lot size and go to the .4 to .5 acre, you know, half-acre lots and attract some nicer homes and have an HOA to, you know, help maintain the aesthetics of the community and keep it looking proper.
I know you've, I know you've toured this property, but the homes to the west, I know you've looked at those lot sizes of those homes and those particular homes, because those are really nice homes.
Yep.
And going back to what he was saying a minute ago about upscaling homes, how will these homes compare to those? Because those people are already there and if I was one of them, I would be really upset if you came in and put a small house right next to mine.
Yeah, these would be expected to be as large or larger than those, the lot sizes are already larger than the lot sizes in that subdivision that is west of us.
Those are really nice houses.
They are.
They all are.
Did you say you had water to start the?
We do have, we've acquired a number of water rights and, you know, for the full development, you know, and going through the process, we're aware that we are going to need to acquire some additional water rights for this concept and would obviously do so before we proceeded to the next step in the process.
Do you have a comment?
I just had a comment.
Yeah, please.
I also attended pre-development and I have those same desires to see trails, parks, open space, things that would benefit our community. I think it's a beautiful area, the mountain view is gorgeous and so, also, you've submitted two of the studies, do you intend to submit the other studies that are required? This has explanation, but it, you know.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I just wanted, as I've had meetings with Andrew and Paul and just trying to understand and make sure we're aware of the steps in the process and are addressing all the items along with the, the application steps to make sure that we're, you know, going through the proper steps in preparing the items for the city council and staff. Yes, we would certainly conduct the other studies necessary, a more thorough study on the impact for the water and the sewer, as what Ensign did prepare, appears that it's just kind of an initial step from comments from Paul on what he received.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you for answering our questions.
I could just touch on the process for the council's information. He still needs to complete his notices of affected entities, and so once he does that, then we will consider the petition formally submitted to our city. And what will happen then is we'll need to do a resolution and bring that to the city council where you will accept the petition, which basically authorizes him to begin the studies and so forth that the city council would need for that decision. So that's kind of where we're at in the process, he's just at the very beginning, he still has some work to do.
So the residents living in that area around it would receive notice, right?
Yes, he has to send out notices to everybody within 300 feet of the subject property, I believe, which he's in the process of doing.
300 feet, that was really only that one, 1360 East. Is it, it would be county as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not very many people that would be getting that. And then is there a public comment tied to that resolution or, I can't recall last time, did we have a public hearing before we accepted any?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our discussion items. We do have an RDA meeting, so instead of going upstairs and then coming back down, I am going to recess from our work meeting and then we'll reconvene after the RDA meeting before going upstairs. Okay, so we're recessed at 6:14.